Good evening and welcome to this evening's council and committee of the whole meeting for May 2nd. Bonjour, bienvenue au réunion de conseil et comité premier pour les deux mai. Roll call? Okay, thank you. So we'd like to open this evening as we do with our land acknowledgement. And this evening it'll be delivered by Councilor Caitlin Nichol from Ward 5.
As we meet today, I would like to take a moment to recognize the importance of the land on which we are getting. The municipality of West Nipissing respectfully acknowledges that we are located on the homelands of the Anishnaabe peoples, on the traditional territory of the Nipissing, Temagana, and Doki First Nations, covered by the Robyns. We honor and recognize their historical connection to the land and value their significant contributions in shaping and strengthening our communities. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility towards reconciliation and improving our understanding of local indigenous peoples and their culture.
Okay, can I take any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, and we move on to, we have an addendum before this evening's meeting, which you will find on your desk. Section 9, there are two items, so can I get them? Oh, you have them versus the second, actually, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Palerain and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Be it resolved that the addendum for the meeting of council held on May the 2nd, 2023 be approved as presented.
All favor? Carry it? And the agenda, please.
It is moved by Councilor Palerain and seconded by Councilor Gagne. Be it resolved that the agenda for the meeting of council held on May the 2nd, 2023 be approved as presented.
All those in favor? Carry. Okay, I will move on to section 5 for delegations and petitions. What's up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have before us tonight, they're receiving two petitions. The first of which is a petition to reinstate Antecia on the Oshato board, and I will read it in as follows. Bear in mind, it's worded as a resolution. However, I'm reading it as it's been presented, it is not actually a resolution of council, it's being tabled. Whereas Antecia has been instrumental in her role as a board member of the Oshato and has carried out her duties exceptionally, while listening to and speaking on behalf of the residents and their families. And whereas at the April 4th West Nipissing council meeting, Antecia brought up a very serious issue regarding Oshato. Whereas Antecia is the only board member who's interested in investigating such issues on behalf of staff, residents, and family members. We, the undersigned residents and family members of residents living at Oshato home for the agent, as well as concerned citizens of West Nipissing, call upon West Nipissing council to pass the following motion. Be it resolved that the committee assignments for the 2022-26 term be revised at the discretion of the mayor and that Councilor Antecia be appointed to the Board of Management for the Oshato Long-Term Care.
Thank you.
The second petition that we have before us tonight is a petition presented with regard to requesting repairs on Montreal and Abbottibbi Street, and they are requesting a repair of a culvert.
Okay, so be it noted that those petitions have been received by council. Just to note, petitions received at a meeting are written to the record and normally discussed at the next meeting of council. In the case of the first petition, because the subject matter is a reconsideration of a decision already taken by resolution of council, section 15.1 of the procedural bylaw will govern this matter. Should any prevailing member, meaning any of the seven who voted in favor of adopting the new committee assignments, wish to bring the matter back, it is in their authority to do so. If done, it does require a two-thirds vote of council to revisit the matter. For the second petition, it will be discussed at the next one or at the next Public Works Committee of the Whole?
Which is the next one.
Which is the next one, okay. So that will be in Committee of the Whole under Public Works for the next meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is item 6.1. And A, we have a budget update on capital works projects. Oh, sorry, I did see to that, Mr. Barbo, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm just chasing my information here, but I guess I'll pass it along to Elisa shortly. What I will say is during the budget delivery, oh, there it is, thanks. During the budget deliveries, I was making statements, they sound like sales pitch, oh, we're in trouble, we're in trouble. We don't have a lot of room. Well, this year, it's appearing that our forecasts with respect to, with respect to equipment, thinking that we've added some buffers are still undervalued, and the submissions are coming a lot higher. So there will be some rejigging of the budget so that we don't have to spend more money. And so staff is now limping along. The issue that you see before you is the grader, which basically had $390,000 budget allocation, which is more than it usually is, and it came in at $616,000 with a trade-in. So there's a difference of 500, or there's 571,000, or a difference of about $180,000-ish. So the issue that, or what Public Works is recommending, what Elisa is recommending, is that we will forego the sweeper this year. We'll push that back one year, it's not ideal, but we don't have the money. That money will use because we absolutely need to order grader, these things take time to come in. And what we would be doing, though, is there would be a commitment to next year's capital budget of taking the excess of $36,000 for under the capital. That's the best way we can do it right now, and there really isn't a lot of leeway to, in our opinion. And as you can see, sales pitch here, I think we got you at a good time. With the rain on the roads and the gravel roads and the state that they are, we need grader. So we can't afford to be down on these graders. I don't know, Mr. Craddock, if you have anything else to add on that?
No, you summed it up very well. Do we have questions or comments on this item? Councilor Palerain?
Yes, I'm just wondering why the big jump like this for the machine, like I know it's a six-wheel drive, I don't know, Mr. and I'm not here to answer there, but we need a six-wheel drive? Is a regular grader with due? I know it's not a question you can answer.
Well, I think the nature and the amount of use that our machinery, and I'm going to talk in generalities because you'll never see me on a grader. The type of use and the heavy dutiness of what we have and what we need, you know, you'd just be borrowing trouble on a lesser grader. I don't want to throw the fire chief off, but he actually has experience on that. So is there the technical question, because he actually, a technical question on the six-wheel grader versus a lesser one for what we need, chief? I know.
So with a six-wheel grader, what you're going to get is better traction? Because you have all four wheels driving in the rear, as well as if you're running with the front drive, then when you get into the softer materials, less chance that it sinks over to the side and you can pull it back in. So better steer, better pull is the purpose for having multiple drives. Where on a four-wheel, you're just pushing off the back end all the time, which creates that torque.
Yeah, I know all this. I don't know, we've done 20 years with regenerative graders, and they're even heavier than they were 20 years ago. To me, we don't need a six-wheel grader, but whatever.
I would also just suggest that, that is what was tendered out, and that was what was agreed at a council, and that's, you know, what the staff agreed. So this was already agreed upon by agreeing to the budget, this is just a financial assessment.
But there wasn't forecast to be that price?
No, you're right, yeah.
So.
Don't, if council wishes to consider something else, another option, we can go back. I haven't been provided that information by Public Works. And I'll say this, trying to not be too tongue-in-cheek. Our weather patterns are getting to be such that we're having a hard time keeping up. And what was done in the past, I think the future is a little different now. And the expectations from our public, they're not overly patient anymore, to say the least. So, you know, the issue is to guarantee service and dependable service.
Any other questions?
Are we getting our money's worth for the trade-in? Like, couldn't we repurpose it and keep it as a backup instead?
I've got a little bit, so we did have, you know, we received two bids on the grader. The other bid was actually, was actually higher, but the trade-in values were about the same. So it sort of speaks, that's probably about the trade-in value. This grader, as a backup, requires so much investment to make it a backup grader, yeah.
Other questions? I'll just field one if you don't mind. So obviously, that's a huge increase on this one piece of equipment. What's the expectation? And maybe that's a difficult question to answer at this point for the other large capital outlets, both in Public Works. Because there were a couple other pieces of equipment, not just a, not just the sweeper, but there's other things out there as well. Yes?
Yeah, so on tonight's agenda actually is the patch truck. And it's about where we actually expected it to come in. It's kind of a lighter vehicle, it's more like a pickup size, so it's a lighter vehicle, and so it actually has come in. We are still seeing pressure on our, on our, on our light vehicles. There wasn't a lot of other equipment capital in water and sewer's budget, and many services didn't have anything significant, and water and sewer hasn't gone out for theirs yet. But I do expect that this is going to be a trend we see. And as Mr. Barbo said at the beginning of his conversation, we are seeing on our resurfacing projects substantial increases. But the department of now, we're just waiting for the rest of the tenders to come in before we come back to council and what the approach is going to be to those projects, but certainly it's been a challenging year.
That's true, Madam Mayor, I was going to add that there are tenders closing next week, and we are waiting to see what the outlook was before bringing those good news back to council.
And I know with problems you will bring solutions, so that's, that's great. So you are looking for here?
Well, there will be a resolution to award the grader either at this meeting or at the next meeting.
On this meeting.
Agreeing to the, you know, to this memo.
Is it on this one or is it on later? Okay, so that resolution will come later in the meeting in the regular portion to award that. If there's no other questions, I'll move on to, yes, Councilor Gagne?
What's the risk about moving the vacuum from the sweeper? What's the risk, like, I guess if ours break, we're going to have to rent one or?
Well, right, that's for you, Madam Mayor. We're sweeping right now. We do contract out some sweeping, and we do have some other sweeping, but yes, we would have to rent, but that's the risk that we need to take. And it's the lesser of evils with respect to the need to order grader on time. And the other risk or opportunity, depending on how twisted your sense of humor would be, would be the next year. Yeah, that vacuum truck's probably going to cost more than what we're expecting as well. It's just, this is the world we live in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I'm just curious, why didn't we get a bid from John Deere on the grader?
I don't know why they wouldn't have, have bid. You know, I mean, we circulate the documents, they may have felt they can't, they may have felt they can't meet, you know, the production as well. You know, our suppliers are seeing the same thing, sometimes they just simply can't commit to producing the equipment. So I don't know why John Deere wouldn't have bid.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, and we'll bring that back later on as a resolution. So the next item on the agenda, 61B, is a discussion in regards to a strategy regarding the disposition of surplus land owned by the municipality. There is a staff report included in your agenda packages, which I found really interesting reading. And would you like to give an overview or shall we pass it to?
No, it's for you, Madam Mayor. You know, the document was produced by Mr. Charme. It does highlight the properties that we have available to us, and it does start the ball rolling for discussion with respect to which lands we want to reconfirm usage, and lands and property, and what land or and property does, you know, does the municipality wish to declare surplus and repurpose? Mr. Charme, if you have anything to add, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Barbo. Basically, the report's fairly self-explanatory, and as I noted, the list that was provided to you is everything. So it does include all the lands on which we have buildings and this building and parking lots. And, you know, obviously, not everything that we have is available to be declared surplus. What I, the purpose of this was to basically see if we can establish some sort of strategy where, you know, we, I've seen some municipalities, they have a strategy where they declare five or 10 properties surplus per year and go through the process, or two, or, you know, if we want to look at some sort of a circle, or, you know, let's get rid of the properties that are, you know, just in the urban core. Or I just, I'm looking for a direction, because we do have a lot of them, and admittedly, some of them really aren't suitable. They need to be sort of highlighted in and of themselves. So my next thought was, would it be prudent to bring back at a subsequent meeting a list of those that we think that are declaring surplus, that have some value and that have some, that could be, you know, developed and fairly quickly? Because we've seen in a variety of reports that we do have a housing shortage, and we have land that we might be sitting on that could be repurposed. And then, of course, council will have to determine what sort of, you know, whether we're going to put them out for public tender, which should probably be the preferred option.
Thank you very much. I really liked what's been presented here, because when we look at the housing strategy that's just been released and what some of our long-term goals over the course of our term is, a lot of that, it ties into economic development, it ties into providing housing in the community. And I just think that this is an opportunity for us to develop a policy that will help us meet these goals as a council. So I do thank staff for the preparation of the report. Can I take any questions from council, Councilor Rivard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I guess not so much a question, but I wasn't looking at a strategic point, but one thing I noticed was similar to, we just sold that land in River Valley, a little laneway. I think those would be smart to kind of tackle right away, try and get rid of those that seem to not have much value to the municipality or to anyone else other than the adjacent landowners. And then just the other one, like I looked through the list quite a bit, looking at provincial mapping and such. And the one that really stuck out was that Lang Park. Little festival parking area, that would be when we're looking at housing, affordable housing, apartment-type of buildings. That seems like a prime location near the railway, not necessarily prime location, but at least something can cover it. And the other one would be the Pidu's Park and baseball field, to me. When I worked for the Parks and Rec Committee, going there to cut grass was a long trip, just to go cut the grass for a baseball field that may not be used as much as it used to. Or that money, when we sold that land, could potentially be used for the Aguilar Park redevelopment, something, or the old mill site redevelopment, something like that. I'd like to see some strategies like that, where we're looking to try and consolidate our assets into one area. So we want to have a baseball field there, one at Aguilar. It could all be at Aguilar, and the money used from selling, I think it says it's seven acres. You could get a few lots in there, help our town out.
Any questions, comments on this item? Councilor Sandri?
My only question is on the one land on Vidnev Court, why is that one still showing, or why is it conditionally sold?
That one, it's through you, Madam Chair, that one is in the process. If there was an offer made and accepted, the transaction just hasn't, all the conditions haven't been fulfilled, and it hasn't transferred out yet, but at the moment, it's in process.
So it's not up for discussion?
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. The other one I just noticed on my list was, I couldn't find it on the list, so maybe it isn't owned by the municipality, but the longer they had planned to build the hall, it's to come for them. Is that owned by the municipality? No, no, that ends that.
We're not his property to you. Is he still there? Yeah, coming soon. Okay, other questions, comments? Councilor Gagne?
When I'm clerk, at the same time, we're going to look at different areas too, like, looking, we have one there in every area.
Well, as you.
Maybe make a recommendation to some land that potentially could be sold. Like, I don't want to just sell land that's in Sturgeon Falls, which is most of the highway traffic is. So maybe we can look at the other areas to see if we can kind of spread it around throughout a few years or something.
Through you, Madam Chair, unfortunately, the land we own in the outlined areas and the unorganized areas is mostly already its boat launches and things like that. We inherited them at the time of amalgamation. The vast majority of the surplus land that we own, or the developable surplus, is in Field, Cash Bay, Sturgeon, and Werner. Because those were the organized municipalities that, and a lot of them, as I indicated, a lot of them came from failed tax sales where the properties got vested in us when there were no bids. Or it might have been a building on them at some point in time that has been, you know, taken down. And some of them are, you know, properties that were given as parkland dedication in subdivisions, old subdivisions in Springer Days and Werner Days. So, you know, there's a variety of reasons why we own them, but unfortunately, the vast majority, and if you look at the list, there's not very many vacant ones in the outline areas.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Barbo?
So I guess what I have heard as a strategy is we will carve out some of the odds and sods. Some of those odds and sods are probably only valuable to the adjacent properties and those things. So we'll carve those out, and then we'll be coming, combining a bunch of suggestions here with recommendations and staff reports on the more marketable land, but also potentially land that could be future use for us as well. So when you're looking at municipal property, it's not, you know, you're the custodians for the 14,500 people. And you want to make sure when you declare property surplus that you don't have any future need for it as well. So you really have to, sometimes it's better to, you know, take your time on this, and when in doubt, don't. So, you know, you want to have a look at, you know, being strategic with respect to that. So we will come back. What I have said to staff is that every first meeting of the month, which is a general government, I would like to have, you know, start checking off a little bit, start carving out a little bit. And so we'll start doing that once a month and provide you with a cluster of the land that has similar kind of ideas. But then if you have, as an example, Lang Park, that will be a discussion. You know, as to what you, you know, whether we want to keep it for affordable housing, whether, you know, so that will be a discussion that council should have prior to declaring it surplus. Okay?
Councilor Kish?
I just had a comment, and I guess a question too, so with regards. One thing that did caught my eye, and it's tied to the term plan that we just developed, is the scouts' property in Werner. Couldn't we build any exceptions, let's say, for, you know, that particular case, it's kind of like one, you know, it's kind of a unique situation where prior to amalgamation, you know, the volunteers got together, built the scout building. Be, you know, kind of sad to kind of remove that because they've maintained it over the years. Wouldn't there be like policy exception that we can kind of fit in to say, you know, if there's a nonprofit, you know, they're organized, they, you know, they do their books and whatnot? Can we just transfer the property, let's say like for a dollar, and they manage it? Because my understanding is in discussion with the group, I've, I'm in frequent discussions with the group. They are maintaining everything from hydro insurance, you know, maintenance, snow removal, the likes, similar to the San Karin Otak and Leving, but a little, a little less, let's say, onerous.
So to answer, those are valid policy statements, Councilor Koshine, and I think that once those properties come up, those types of discussions would take place. And once the policy discussion, if you're suggesting that because somebody is using a property now, well, it depends on how much is used and how much property, because that property, I think, is six acres. So what you see, you know, so, you know, just the building is not, that property may have some value. So I think that once that property comes up for discussion, I think those kinds of discussions have to happen. And then council would make a decision, a determination as to, you know, what they want to do individually with each property. But certainly, the mere fact that our properties are on here, there will be some that are definitely for municipal use. As Mr. Charme said, they won't be brought to you because we're not selling this building. We're not selling the recreation center, we're not selling the Werner Arena, yet.
Oh, God, you know.
No, I got a playboi. So, you know, so yes, we will be bringing those for discussion.
I have a question. When, when we talk about policies in regards to disposition, in the original background here, you know, you reference, sorry, lost my train with that. Trying to stop people from using municipal properties to flip speculation. So have you seen examples in other municipalities where disposition of certain lands are tied to specific development proposals? As in, the land will only be sold if the proponent is going to do this and this amount of time? Because I think that that's a really important thing to consider, especially where properties have a high potential to address some of these issues like housing. So if you look at Lang Park, and you say, okay, well, we're only going to sell that if somebody is going to come in and build a 20-unit apartment building. Or, so is there kind of precedent in other municipalities?
You are, Mr. Madam Chair. Yes, the answer is yes, and that would be an RFP. Council would decide if they had wanted to get rid of that property, and they have a specifically want that, then you would put it out, rather than just a tender, you'd put it out as a request for proposal. We're seeking proposals from developers to do this. And then you set out all the criteria of what you're expecting. Usually set a minimum bid and make it very clear in what you're looking for, so it's not just a.
And there are ways to tie in legally that if it's not done by a such and such time, that it's failed.
Purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, so that, that's the kind of part that interests me, and that's done on a property-by-property basis, not as an overarching policy.
That's correct, and as Mr. Barbo said, when we bring it back, you know, you may decide, you know, you just some, you might just want to get rid of some, you might have specific ideas for, and go to another piece of process.
Okay, and I will, no, that would be a question when a specific property comes back, so I'll save that. So you are looking for direction just to kind of?
I think I got it. I think that we'll bring back, we'll decide, you know, maybe we'll bring back four or five a month, or three, or whatever that number is, depending on the complexity of each property, and maybe have council mull them over, you know, little bites at a time.
One step forward.
We can have a more fulsome discussion.
On the specific. Okay, and you're going to pull out the pieces of this, like, can you do this same list, but pull out, say, all the stuff that is?
I already have some.
Okay, and pull off the little pieces as well. Okay, so is everybody happy with that kind of direction? We'll kind of move forward on this kind of strategy a bit at a time?
at a time and start looking at different properties and what strategies we might want to take with the difference. Yeah, Councilor Pagni?
It's not a matter of, that was a good idea, but because there's a trend now that a lot of people are buying just to flip or just to invest and they're going to leave it there. So I did put some restriction on some of those.
Especially if we want specific things to have.
It also provides direction for me for properties that we kind of don't want to get rid of that way. I don't waste anybody's time when people call or bring in an offer, just thinking.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the report. I think that's a good start to, to how we look forward. So, you know, some of the issues, especially surrounding housing development and what we can do with that. So, thank you very much for all the stuff there. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is the council vacancy policy options. So this is just one of the items that was kind of on my list because without a clearly defined policy, we saw what the worst case scenario can be during the last term of council. So I think it's important for, for us as a council to, to really develop something that, that gives direction if, if there is a situation again where we find a vacant seat, so that we don't, you know, deal with the worst case scenario and, and really kind of have a clear, defined path to how those things should be handled. So with that, I'll pass that to Mr. Barble. He'll get to review the options there.
This one, I'll, I'll pass it even more quickly to, to Mr. Sharm as the election, chief election official. But I, I would also add that, you know, in all of the fun stuff last term, one of the key things, and we're expecting that report, I think in June, one of the key statements right off the bat that Municipal Affairs has indicated is that this council should have a policy to not repeat some of that in, in the past. But as the memo indicates, typically when a seat is declared vacant, you can either provide it by, by election or by appointment. By election, you would declare the seat vacant, you would call it by election and that has some time limits. And then by appointment, you would process that are available to council. Some would be the next highest, or the runner-up or, or by appointment or by application, what have you. But Mr. Sharm can speak. She's done a lot more work on it. So what do you want to add?
Thank you, Ms. Barble. Through you, Madam Chair. In doing my, in doing my research, there seemed to be a clear trend amongst municipalities that they seem to treat vacancies in the earlier part of a term differently than vacancies in the latter part of the term in terms of how they handle them. Many, many of them seem to do, if it's in the first 24 months, it automatically goes to a by-election. If it's in the last 24 months, it goes to an appointment process and whatever that looks like, whether that be from the runner-up, from applications, or by direct appointment. Some have a direct appointment provision. So that's what I found in looking at my, in doing my research. In the past, you'll see, we've primarily gone by, by appointment, but the only one that we really had in the one that we did do a by-election was actually one that happened early on in a term. And there was no, it had been a, an acclamation. So there was nobody in the wings anyways. So anyways, the council has a variety of options. They're all pointed out in here. And it's entirely if council wishes to go to an appointment process, what does that look like? Do they, do you want to split it up as I've indicated, or just choose one option, we're automatically going to have a by-election, we're automatically going to go to a, an appointment process. I, I'm, I'll bring back a report based on the comments and the direction that I get here tonight, based on the options that have been provided.
Questions or comments? Councilor Pagni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would, I would support option one for two years less than eight. And then option B, two B, for two years, four years. I think that would make sense.
Councilor Pagni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've always, like, maybe two years seems a little, it's just because to me, if you, the election just happened, there was a lot of money spent for an election there as well. And then even if it's within six months or so, then you're slapping another 10,000 to 20,000 towards it. Well, the appointment for $500 by application, I, I don't think we should just appoint the runner-up in any situation. I think if the appointment, it should be by application, just gives a little more chance to everybody to put their name in if they wish. And then it would come to council, kind of like what we saw last term at the end. I believe that's how, that's how it was decided. But to me, I, I just believe that throughout the four years, it should be appointment by application.
Just to point out, Madam Mayor, it's not 20,000. It's 6,000, 3,000. No, 6,000.
Any questions or comments? And then Councilor Kishin?
I'm in agreement with what Councilor Pagni mentioned, and it makes sense, you know, within the first 24 months of the term, it's automatically a by-election. You know, there was a cost associated with that, but, you know, we're also there to represent the people and, you know, going with the recommendation, what's been, you know, looked at, I think, favor that more for the first 24 months. And the last 24 months, appointment, by, you know, direct appointment, because you could have instances where you don't necessarily have a runner-up and you're still going to be, you know, you're still going to be back to square one. So I would favor by-election first 24 months, last 24 months of the term, direct appointment. Or two B, my own opinion.
Oh, by application?
Yes, by application.
I thought that's what you were referring to, but I didn't want to.
Other questions or comments on that? Councilor Pagni?
I agree with, I'll say you go. I think option two B is my preferred option. It's going to be faster, less costly, and technically, everybody can apply to actually put their name if they want to, without the cost and the time of running a by-election, regardless if it's two years, six, I don't really care. Let people apply, like they should or they could, and let council decide what fills up that position. Thank you.
Very much. Councilor Sanziri?
And just to add to that, I mean, when you think of it, two B is basically, we're kind of looking at the same thing as a by-election. We'll have a bunch of individuals putting their names forward. Yes, our constituents will get to vote for it. However, we'll have, we'll give the opportunity to numerous individuals to put their name forward. And if they choose to do so, then it'll be up to us as council to make that determination. And I agree with that position.
Okay. Councilor Nichol?
I'm also in agreement with two B for the...
Can we see somebody? Oh, no, because we've got two. Okay, I don't, is that enough for you to go back? So the consensus of, of council seems to be to go with appointment by application?
The full four years.
For the full four years. My, my only concern with giving you direction on that at this point is we are missing two members. And so if Madam Clerk draws up everything and when it comes back to council, you know, they can have extra work for her. So I don't know.
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. So I, I just don't, I don't know what, how Councilor Restool or Tessier...
He became a council by appointment.
Oh, yes, he did. So...
The bones of it, though, if there was an adjustment, it would be just changing a few things. The general nature of the policy would, you know, likely.
I do have just one question that may help you in determining it. So when we looked at the process of the last term, we went through the appointment by application process. And at the end of the process, there was still a four-four tie as to which candidate would be successful. So the policy that, that you write will have language surrounding what the method of breaking that tie would be. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Arm wrestling. And do we know what that is?
In the past, the pre, the current policy that we have that was put in place for that was a name and a hat.
Okay. And is that's legal?
Yep. Point to us, name and a hat. They're all legal.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that there was something written in the policy that would address that as well. So that will come back to council at our next meeting in the regular portion. And with that, we are done with general government. And for committee of the whole sewer and water, Councilor Pagni, are you prepared to chair this for sure?
Sure. I wasn't aware of it.
I will pass it to, to Councilor Pagni.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess I'm going to pass it back to Mr. Barble.
So we had received some requests a few years ago. I'm going to skate a little bit as well, but with respect to either extending sewer and water on Canal going southerly or looping the sewer and water from the corner of Singin' Canal to Canal and Dutrazak. And so what we have here is a petition to, that they would like that. So I understand, and I, I do apologize, there's been a lot of, a lot of weather-related issues where people are busy. But we do have a report with respect to that. And what I will do is ask Mr. Remyard and Mr. May to come back to council at the next meeting to give you some numbers to discuss that. But from a technical perspective, it is felt that, staff has felt that that would be a good thing. You never really want a dead-end water lines So this would provide looping. And it does provide, it is, so from a, you know, from a, an infrastructure perspective, it is, it would be well received. It's just the cost are, what the costs are and how they would be distributed, whether they would be done as a local improvement, or, or whatever way, financing way that we would. So I think we probably have to come up with some of that as well, as far as, yeah. So we will put this on the next agenda and with more detail and to show how it would be done. If you wish to, to have it, it would appear that they would want to, but do they want to at any cost? And so we'll, we'll find, we'll find that out. And I think the process would be, this is what it costs, here's how we recommend it gets done. Are you still interested? Okay?
Any questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
This is probably, the area that would be served by the new infrastructure, that would just be, is it water and sanitary sewer or just water that we're going to fill? Just water?
They want water and sewer access. I'm not sure that's doable.
No sanitaries, no, no.
No.
Okay.
So it would be able to be one.
Is that within our urban service boundaries and in our official plan? So then that would actually, it's supported for our long-term growth, like doing something. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes, Secretary Paul, through Mr. Chair. I don't know if this is out of line for this situation, but throughout canvassing, some people were mentioning that down Nipissing on the east side, they were hoping to subdivide some lots throughout the, throughout the years. But with water services, they can sell smaller lots, kind of get more housing along that stretch. But then also natural gas, I was just in conversation with someone who started a petition for all of this on Permanence Act, and they're looking at getting natural gas down there and kind of in the process of that, which they've been, it looks like they are allowed to go down Marlow and across the pier over to Permanence Act with natural gas, which kind of crosses some private property, I believe. So I don't know if it'd be smart to kind of start looking at the water at the same time, if there's a way to work together with natural gas and if there's a way to lead the costs or there's no way for that.
We can come back. It was looked at. It is outside our urban service boundary. And, and it becomes quite cost prohibitive to get the line all the way out to where there's people. And so we could look at that. But certainly, right now, what we'll do is look at, you know, what is a biteable chunk here and have that, and have that first.
So, yeah, that's just a response of what's, I was thinking if you went down Nipissing rather than Dutrazak, there's a little more chance, I believe, at that development for the line as you go. But I've always been a strong believer as well, is if you extend the services, we're going to, I would like to see some sort of commitment from homeowners down there as well, if it's a certain percentage or something that council would agree on because otherwise you extend and if only two people decide, as they say, they love their well water, then it's a lot of money.
Through you, Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, sorry. We, we will provide those options on what a local improvement charge would look like. But certainly, we ventured into some pretty wonky deals on Dutrazak originally, where people would decide not to participate. Then they, you know, those who paid the full amount then get started, starts getting credits for the next 15 years. And, you know, it's, no. And Delorme Road was that way too, and no. So either you are or you're not. And you're in and you're going to be charged for the connection. And usually, there's an ability to amortize over, say, I don't want to put words in her mouth because she's going to shoot me, but 10, you know, you'd amortize those over 10 years and they would be added on to your taxes on a 10-year payment. That's usually how a local financial account should, at least it will bring that.
Something else came up throughout, through you, Mr. Chair. With my work, if there's, there's been sewer lines passed on a road after they already all had septic systems or wells with the town water, if they plan to drill a well after the fact, they're not allowed. They have to connect to city water. So I don't know if we have something like that in place and policy where that would help if you run that line down. Someone can keep their well for the time being because they don't want to. Right away, they may have just drilled a well, let's say 15 years down the line. If they go to drill a new well, I think that's when you encourage to connect to city water because we have the services. But if there's nothing in writing, they could just drill another well.
Certainly, we can have a look at that.
Any, any other questions? Oh, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So that'll come back with the next meeting, with a little bit more information. It's just that our crews are, the people who have the smarts to tell us all about this stuff are, are out dealing with emergent situations tonight with water levels, et cetera. So hopefully by next week, it'll be nice and quiet and calm and Peter and Sean will be, be back with us. Okay, so that's it for committee of the whole. Good job, everybody. And so we'll move on to our regular meeting. Madam Clerk?
It is moved by Councilor Gagne and seconded by Councilor Pagni. We have resolved that council for the West Nipissing municipality hereby approves the consent agenda items 7A, B, and C presented at the meeting on May the 2nd, 2023.
Any questions on the consent agenda items? Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull out 6.3 on page 105.
6.3. It's the January 11th, the West Nipissing Police Services Board meeting. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, 104, 105, council minutes?
Committee, Sewer and Water Committee.
Okay, the April 18th council.
April 18th council minutes.
Okay. So they, that's item A. Okay.
You said 100, page 105?
Yeah.
Okay, so what do we do? We pull that out?
Pull it, when we vote on the rest of it.
Okay, so those have been pulled out. We'll discuss that next on the agenda. So we have a motion on the table to accept the consent agenda. Items B and C only. Any other questions, comments, anybody else would like any items removed from the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor? Carried? Okay. And then on the... Okay, and then on the water, you, you have a question or comment?
Sorry, so before we move on, I need to read in a resolution to table these minutes so that they can be discussed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I need a mover and a second, please.
Councillor Rivard? Councillor Kuchin?
This is moved by councillor Rivard and seconded by councillor Kuchin. We have resolved that the minutes of the April 18th council and committee of the whole meeting be adopted as presented.
Okay, questions or comments on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, yeah, it was brought to my attention and I never really thought of it when you're talking about the dumping station and behind the Comfort Inn. It's actually a few people from Sturgeon that asked me, says, why don't you guys try it out in Werner first? The infrastructure's already there.
Okay.
The dumping site is there, the.
I'm just gonna stop you.
Okay.
Because when we're going to approve the minutes, we can't, we're not reopening an item for discussion. We're just like, are the minutes accurate? But if you would like to bring that back to be discussed at the next meeting, we can do it through an agenda request form, and I have the same comment as you. And so, you know, like, we can bring that back for further discussion at our next meeting. During this portion of the meeting, all we're doing is, are the minutes accurate? Do they accurately reflect what happened at the meeting? But if, if there are items that you think were missed in the, in the previous discussion, we can bring that back. Is that okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just so, yeah, so I, I have to bring it up, make an agenda item?
Yeah, if you wanna call me tomorrow, you know, the forms that I gave you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you can put in an agenda request and that can be brought forward at the next meeting. And then we can discuss those points as part of the overarching discussion about the RV dumping stations, because I don't think we're at the point yet. We're not doing anything this year anyway, so we still have time to refine our strategy as council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that being said, the minutes, there's a motion to approve the minutes on the table. And Fern and I will work together to get the agenda item back on for another meeting. So for these minutes, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting? Okay, carried, thank you. Okay, so that was our consent agenda. And next we move on to planning, which is 7.2, and there's just one item for discussion here.
This is moved by councillor Gagne and seconded by councillor Pellerain. Whereas on April the 18th, 2013, council for the West Nipissing municipality granted approval for a draft plan of subdivision of six lots on Bay Street, legally described as part of plot five concession A, being parts one and two on plan 36R 5355 and part two and three, plan 36R 7373 in the township of Springer, owned by Paul and Janine Laffrenier. And whereas extensions and draft approval have been granted on March 15th, 2016, and further on May 21st, 2019. And whereas the property and draft subdivision approval have been transferred to Julie LeBlanc, Pauline Laffrenier, and Danny Laffrenier as a result of the passing of Paul and Janine Laffrenier. And whereas the applicants have made a request seeking a further extension in order to allow for the required works to be completed and the subdivision to be registered. We therefore resolve that council for the West Nipissing municipality hereby approves the requested extension of the draft plan of subdivision until April 30th, 2026, allowing the applicant subdivider time to complete the required work and to register the subdivision.
Okay, questions or comments on the motion?
Is that original, you didn't see 26?
That's the timeline they're seeking.
That's, that's a stretch. I don't know, I thought you were just a typo there, but.
Other questions or comments, because I do have a few as well. Okay, so my questions are as follows. So the original plan was approved 10 years ago, on April 18th, 2013. And usually there are three-year windows on approvals to subdivision.
That's correct.
So there's been several extensions granted on this property. Okay, and since that time, the, there have been updates to the provincial policy statement, the official plan, and our zoning bylaws. And would any of the changes that have happened in those documents affect the, the plan of subdivision that was submitted, i.e. were there any changes in lot sizes or whatever that would make the plan that was approved on non-compliant today?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, the, the lot sizes would still meet the requirements today. They're fully serviced lots, so they would meet the requirements today.
Okay, I agree with councillor Pellerain that the, an additional three years, when this project's already been on the books for 10, seems extensive. Do we have any leeway in, in shortening that timeframe whatsoever?
That's entirely within council's discretion to grant whatever extension they feel is appropriate.
Okay.
Or no?
Um, yeah, it just seems weird that it's too, like, 10 years down the line and you still have to plan on the book, so, you know. Councillor Gagne?
Madam Mayor, there's a, this, this subdivision has changed hands because of the passing of the parents, I guess, or relatives. So technically, I guess, let's say if we say we don't give an extension, technically they can actually come back and reapply right for subdivision.
Absolutely.
So, so I, I see no problem in granting the extension, because I think they are almost ready to be able to kind of sell or on with the subdivision. So I don't see any problems, since it did change hands from the original owners in the past five or six years or something. So I see no problem, yeah, patient, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councillor Pellerain?
Yeah, I'm just curious, it changed happen in the last five, six years? And the application was done 10 years ago?
The application, as to your mantra, the application was made by the parents who've since passed away and the property is transferred to the children.
Okay, yeah, fish, thank you.
Okay, with no other questions or comments on the table, I'll put the resolution to the vote. All those in favor? It's carried. Next item on the agenda, we go to the new business section. And we have a couple of bylaws to consider, so we'll let the clerk read the motion.
It is moved by councillor Gagne and seconded by councillor Kuchin. We have resolved that the bylaw number 202342, being a bylaw to set the 2023 RET tax rates for the West Nipissing municipality, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Okay, questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried? And next, the equipment of the deputy clerk.
It is moved by councillor Rivard and seconded by councillor Pellerain. Be it resolved that bylaw 202343, being a bylaw to appoint a deputy clerk for the West Nipissing municipality, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its passed.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried?
It is moved by councillor Pellerain and seconded by councillor Rivard. Whereas at a meeting held on May the 2nd, 2023, council received a request from the Sturgeon Falls Rod and Gun Club, seeking a five-year extension of the license agreement. We have therefore resolved that council authorizes the mayor and chief administrative officer to sign a five-year extension to the license agreement with the Sturgeon Falls Rod and Gun Club.
Questions or comments? Oh, yes, it's on you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I imagine that the current bylaw or contract is going to be rewarded to, because West Nipissing Police Services are still in there. So it's.
We cannot make that change when we do the extension agreement.
And I, I know in the past that they were involved, and I'm not sure if the OPP is the same thing, but that's not the same thing. Okay, perfect, thank you, you're the only question I have.
Other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carried. Okay, next we're gonna move on to the appointments for the Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee. The clerk has prepared ballots in the same manner as we did the other committee appointments at the beginning of the term for citizen members. So there is a list provided in your package, which will also, oh, right. I'm sorry, no, they're, they're.
This is my ballot.
Okay, so somebody in the Metamoradic will be distributing ballots.
I've already been distributed. I just gotta go pick them up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, thank you. So on your desk when you arrive this evening, you will have kind of voted out for the thing, for the community. Who are we calling it? Calling apart your Culture and Recreation Committee. There are seven members, so if you mark your seven members, and Madam Clerk will come around and pick those up, and they'll be tallied.
I'll lose what you gave me, it works.
So you're gonna do the tally then?
Yeah, just give us.
Yeah.
It is moved by councillor Pellerain and seconded by councillor Rivard. We have resolved that the following individuals be appointed to the Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee. Tina Buffard, Catherine Clark, Christine Dumont, Alan Jean-Gros, Sonia Ott, Gail Primo, and Nathan Sylvay.
Okay, all those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by councillor Pellerain and seconded by councillor Rivard. We have resolved that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign a lease agreement with Van Naal and Michel Guinet. Michelin?
Michelin.
Michelin Guinet, for the management, operation, and maintenance of the Cashbait Trailer Park.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor? Carried?
This is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Kuchin. We have resolved that council grants permission for the following temporary street closures for the West Nipissing Run for Health Marathon on Sunday, June 18th, 2023, beginning at 10 a.m. Bay Street between LeBlanc and Smiley Road, Smiley Road, Delorme Road between Smiley Road and LeBlanc Road, LeBlanc Road between Bay Street and LaLanne Road, LaLanne Road and Fort Road between LaLanne Road and the Sturgeon River House Museum.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carried?
It is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Kuchin. Whereas council received the West Nipissing Land Use and Development Strategy at the meeting of April the 18th, 2023. We have therefore resolved that the West Nipissing Land Use and Development Strategy be adopted as presented.
Okay, questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor?
It is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Kuchin. Whereas one quotation was received for the purchase of a two-ton truck with aluminum dump body for the municipality of West Nipissing. And whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, we have therefore resolved that the quotation for the two-ton truck with aluminum dump body for the municipality of West Nipissing be awarded to Blue Mountain Chrysler Limited, having submitted a quotation of $90,130, meeting all specifications.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? I'm sorry.
It is moved by councillor Kuchin and seconded by councillor St. Louis. Whereas two quotations were received for the purchase of a six-wheel-drive articulated motor grader for the West Nipissing municipality. And whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, we have therefore resolved that the quotation for a six-wheel-drive articulated grader for the West Nipissing municipality be awarded to Tormont Caterpillar, having submitted the lowest quotation of $616,528.38, meeting all specifications.
Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, and, okay, so we're gonna move to the addendum, which is section nine, and.
It is moved by councillor St. Louis and seconded by councillor Kuchin. Whereas a proposal was received for the construction of a new public works office in the West Nipissing municipality. And whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, we have therefore resolved that the proposal received for the construction of a new building for the Public Works Office, the Public Works Building for the West Nipissing municipality be awarded to Jason Gagne renovations, having submitted a proposal of $182,104.93, meeting all specifications.
Questions or comments on that?
It's not a way, was this in the, in the budget or in the, it was? And it's, it's to, it's in the yard of the municipal work, and it's to do what?
Uh, to renovate it. It's, uh, leaking, it's, uh, terrible, uh, condition, and so that's where a foreman are.
It's actually replacement of the, the trailer that the foremen are, are in.
As I'm saying, is it portable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it a trailer or is it portable?
It was a two thousand and twenty-two, um, approved budget project that, um, because of how the award went out, didn't get done in two thousand and twenty-two, carried forward. So it was money that was set aside from two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, so it's the trailer beside the garage?
Yes. Yeah.
What?
It's a portable.
It's a lot of money to fix a portable?
It's a new building, that's being.
Correct, yeah. Okay, I saw the plans were in the agenda, the original agenda, yes? Yes? Like, there was, there was something in the original agenda. Not, not, uh, it's, so that money was set aside in the two thousand and twenty-two budget, and that amount is there, and it doesn't impact her.
No.
It's been approved by the foreman. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carried. Wait, and this second item.
This is moved by Council Cushing and seconded by Council St. Louis. Whereas a request was received from Rachel Boldry and Chantel Fife for the financial assistance with the installation of portal, portable washroom facilities at a proposed vendor market to be established in Werner on the former Metframage L C D O, not the former L C D O, but property for the summer months. We have therefore resolved that council agrees to provide financial assistance in the approximate amount of seven hundred dollars for the installation of a portable washroom facility to be installed on the premises located at ten four forty-two and ten four forty-four, Highway seventeen in Werner, for the vendor market.
Any questions or comments on that? Council Rivard?
Through you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering, is this some sort of non-for-profit or, or is it just like a private vendor? Because I, I guess now it would be a comment. Do we pay for, like, the markets elsewhere or these types of things? Because then I think we'll end up almost having to start paying for all of these. I don't know about that. So, so we don't pay for the elements?
And I guess we don't know that. They're, they're charging a fee for vendors to participate in this.
We have no information about what the, uh, market relationship, the organizers and the, and the vendors. The request is just to provide the, um, financial assistance for the.
How did the request come in? Like, via email to sound? Any other questions or comments?
My mayor.
Council Perrin.
I did a quick calculation. The sixty dollars per, per weekend, I guess, or per week?
Mm-hmm.
So if, they're estimated about thirty vendors potential, so it's about two dollars per vendor. So I think it should be actually observed, or the costing should be, uh, taken by the, uh, the potential, uh, vendors or, or who's gonna be there. So I, I have some requests, thank you.
Other questions or comments? By Council Rivard?
This, this is my mayor, yeah, for sure. We would need more information, first of all, to consider that. And it's in the product sector, so. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, thank you. I tend to, uh, agree that, uh, it does set a precedent. When we have an established, uh, uh, market here in Sturgeon Falls, uh, we do it for one, then we do it for another. Uh, and then, you know, usually with these things, there will be fees, and so they need to build into the fee structure. Um, you know, the, the availability, uh, to provide facilities for their customers for the days of the business that they're still. So I will put that to a vote. Uh, motions on the table, all those in favor? And that's defeated. Hmm. That's it? And what? Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, that's, uh, that's great. I'll just move on to, uh, a quick, uh, report. Um, uh, Council Christian and I had a very successful outing in the vein last week, uh, last Wednesday night. We had a meet and greet at, uh, the CCL. We probably, I didn't count, because we were too busy talking, but I would say we probably had thirty-five, forty people in attendance. Um, and it was a really good turnout. We had a good conversation, um, with the constituents, uh, people hung around afterwards. We got to talk, uh, one-on-one with a couple of people. So it was a, a really nice experience, uh, to kind of get out and talk to the people of, uh, of Ward Eight. Uh, and that being said, um, uh, uh, we had wanted to, um, bring council meetings, uh, out to the people. And so I've been working with staff to try to find a date, uh, where we could be the first one. Um, and at this point, we are proposing, uh, to visit, uh, North Manetteville, uh, for the June twentieth meeting, and hold our council meeting in the community center there, uh, which will be an opportunity, uh, again, uh, to kind of get a feel, uh, for that part of the municipality. This is something we hope to do, um, in different areas of the municipality, uh, twice a year over the next four years. So we'll start in Manetteville, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll pick a location next. But, uh, uh, we do plan to visit, uh, each of the, uh, outline communities, Werner, Enfield, and River Valley, and, uh, we look forward to doing that. So, um, you know, set, uh, set your calendars, uh, be sure to leave extra early so you get there in time. Meeting will still start at six thirty. Um, I would also like to just mention, um, that the community cleanup is, uh, well underway in Sturgeon, uh, led by our, uh, volunteers in the beautification group. Um, people can find out information, uh, on the beautification group Facebook page or contact, uh, Gail Primo. There's free bags, uh, free gloves, uh, for everybody to use. And, uh, you know, we really do see the difference that that makes in our community. And last but not least, I would just like to take an opportunity, uh, to wish both our deputy mayor, Jamie Restool, uh, and Councilor Caitlin Nichol, happy birthdays, uh, because they both had birthdays within the last week. Uh, so we, uh, we wish you a very happy, uh, next turnaround this year. So, uh, that's it for today. And with that, I'll, uh, leave it to the clerk to help us close.
It is moved by Council Cushing and seconded by Council St. Louis. We have resolved that bylaw number two thousand and twenty-three forty-four, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality, to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held on the second of May, two thousand and twenty-three, shall come into force and take effect on the day it is passed.
Okay, all those in favor? Carried.
It is moved by Council St. Louis and seconded by Council Cushing. We have resolved that the meeting of council held on May the second, two thousand and twenty-three be adjourned.
All those in favor? Carried.